Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting of the joint study session with the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission in Covington City Council. It is Tuesday, July 12th for our special meeting. And study session meeting is formal meeting involving discussion between and among the city council members and staff. And in compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings that is being held in a hybrid format with in-person telephone and virtual office with public. With that, we will do a roll call and we'll just go around the room and introduce ourselves. I'm David.
I'm Davis Calabrine, a member of the, yeah.
Ramel Marquez, Vice Chair of the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission.
To his office?
Amanda Campbell, also my best friend.
That's the hard time. Almost come from the burn. Swearing and I don't know.
I'm Jeff Wagner. I'm your man.
I'm Sean Smith.
Michael Remini.
Joseph Smolow.
You're good. Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer Hartjehalz, a council member.
And Daphne, I see you up there. Would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Yes, Daphne Hernandez, Assistant Planner and Staff Liaison for the city.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I see that we now have several items for discussion. And I'm going to be quiet. I'm going to turn it over to Ramel.
Oh, alright.
Or David or whoever.
Detective.
Detective. Well, in absence of Bronwyn, Bronwyn's just going to do a thank you for having us up for tonight. And what we're going to be basically doing is presenting to you what we've been working on, our strategic plan, but that we put together our work plan. And then what our next steps would be, and that's where we would like to get some feedback from all of you. So I'm not sure if, have you all, did you all receive the documents? Not sure if all of you had a chance to go through it or anything. So if so, we hope to have some engaging conversation afterwards. So we're going to start off with the strategic plan. This is something that Monty and myself and Bronwyn pulled together for the commission. We, what we wanted to do in a, in a quick nutshell is we wanted to put together something that was simple, to the point. But knowing that it was a living document, also easily be updated as we move along. So you'll see if you go through it, that we put in objectives for on a one to two year scenario and then a three to five year scenario. And it allows for also for a, a review period. So as you can see, we, we came up with a value statement, which I'll read just briefly. The Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission are committed to assisting the city of Covington in building a community that celebrates the diversity of America. Our values are to build a community where mutual respect is given and the voices of our residents are heard. We felt it very important that we put out there what we believe in, but in a very simple. Our mission statement, as you're all aware of, and then the commission goals, which we had, I believe, gone through with you last year. What we did with the strategic plan is Monty and I took, and we took our goals, and that's what we built this strategic plan on. I took the first two promote and celebrate and, is that right? Yes. And then Monty took the, yeah, and Monty took facilitate and serve. So we'll go through those and what our plans are with all of them. With the accountability, that was basically what we took from the declaration that created the commission was our accountability to the city, to the city council and to the mayor and to the citizens of Covington. As I mentioned, we have a review process. So we will be undergoing a yearly review of the strategic plan so that we can then check ourselves. How have we been doing? Have we achieved the objectives that we put forward in the current year? What are our objectives for the next year? Do we need to make any adjustments? Have we done, have we already accomplished something that we put down for the future? Because of finding something came up that allowed us to move ahead. So we have a review process in there to, to check ourselves. We also felt that it was important to make sure that we had a definition of what diversity and equity and inclusion. That can mean so many different things to so different people. So as a mission, we brainstormed. And we came to consensus as to what we as a group felt that those meant. And in a nutshell, it basically is that we have, are building a, a community that is inclusive, accepting of all people, regardless of race, gender, sexual identity, religion, as well as political belief. It's a matter of, we respect public discourse. We, we accept that everybody's going to have a differences of opinion. But the idea is that you have dialogue. Because usually when you have dialogue, just like with the commission, not everybody agrees on everything, but guess what? When we communicate, we come to a consensus. So with that, I'll go into the we'll go into what the, the goals and how we broke everything down and just lightly touch on each of the, each of the goals. So with celebrate. What we did was understand that how do things get out of order, Monty? Yeah, because it's, it's promote, celebrate, facilitate and serve, but we got celebrate, serve, promote and facilitate. So we'll go back and forth. So with celebrate, the, the idea is that we want to be working with the city of Covington and the in order to celebrate the diversity of Covington. I believe I mentioned before to the council members that were here when I interviewed, I'm one of the original members before this became Covington. My family was out here in the sixties. So I grew up out here. I grew up when all of this was woods and ranchland and farmland. But it's completely different. It is a wonderfully rich, diverse community. We want to celebrate that. And so with that, we are looking to create, we'll create a subcommittee that will explore existing events that we can partner with, whether it be within the city itself or with sister neighboring cities. Things that we might be able to do with the cities of Maple Valley, Black Diamond, who may also and also do have equity commissions. So things that we can do jointly. We'll seek out guest speakers. We think that one of the best things to do is, is education. Education is what people learn from. And so we want to educate the members of the community on the differences of the cultural diversity that we have in our community. So what better way than to have guest speakers, have public events where we can have speakers from the different culturals, cultures that are, are representative of the city. So those are, that's, those are within our, our one to two year plan. Then we have a three to five year moving forward where we would be looking at annual participations, especially like with Covington Days. Partnering with other commissions on future and things that we can then do to in a sense, show the diversity of not just Covington, but the whole community around us. When you're so close, city to city, Covington, Kent, Maple Valley, Black Diamond, we're all, even Ravensdale, basically is really, there's so much that we have to share. And so we might as well learn to grow. We're all growing. Might as well learn to grow together. And so, but that I'll hand it to Monty to talk about the serve portion.
Hey, Monty, sorry to interrupt, but could you speak into a mic? I would totally appreciate it. Thank you.
Looks green. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you.
Now you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, well, there's a pop quiz. So whatever I did say, you'll be quizzed on. Alright, so like I said, we love subcommittees because you can actually get work done. So well, thank you. If I, we may talk about the plan. Again, I just said the subcommittee for the fifteenth time. We love them. Moving on. So with the serve, I think one of the big things for us was to be seen as folks that are liaisons between the council and then also the committee. And, and it just to kind of see like, how do we reach people? How do we reach people? And not that people can't talk to the council directly. Hopefully, everybody is able to. However, I think there is a sense of intimidation sometimes or a sense of higher than. And so we would love to be, you know, servants who can be liaisons. So for our one to year plan, the subcommittee will be working to figure out ways. And when we talk about innovation, we talk about ways that we interface with the community, whether it's via Covington Days, in a parade. How do we reach out to, you know, folks that don't speak English or that are hard of hearing or whatever? So it's all sort of, you know, neurodiversities within the population. How do we become their liaisons? Also looking for ways or generating ideas of recruitment of our ECSJ members themselves. If we're sort of representing the city, the, the commission should be that representation of the population, if that makes sense. So how do we reach out to folks, you know, that may not be going online and figuring out the application process? How do we get everybody, common folk involved in being part of the leadership team? Also, what is our message? Clearly stating what is it that we're here to do? It took us a year to figure out what are we here to do, but then how do we communicate that to, you know, the rest of the community? So that's our immediate sort of one to two year goals. Looking ahead, of course, we cannot do this alone. So we would like to reach out to agencies, community, whether they're cultural, political, or whatever it is, to figure out how we can, you know, collaborate with agencies. So then they can reach out to their membership and, and their sort of populations and see how, you know, we can all work together. Sometimes it's, I always say, you know, why work hard when you can work smart? It's all about collaboration. And then also, you know, creating, that's a committee again, resources and panel member, which actually goes with the other goal of having folks that represent the community be the people that are actually not just there in front lines, but getting people involved. So it's not just the seven or eight or 10 of us. I'll hand it back to you.
Promote pretty much builds off of the serve portion that Monty was talking about. And again, a subcommittee that we would establish to promote the mission. So in the promote, it's all about promoting the, the commission, what our mission is, what are, 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 are goals and that are. So we would want to be collaborating with the city public affairs team on what are some other opportunities within the city? What are some other opportunities with other commissions? We'd be looking at things such as handouts, our webpage. We'll share with you a handout that we'll be doing at Covington Days that has actually a little contest for the, the community to help engage and get some of their feedback. So things like that, we'd be participating in an objective for the first two years is at least one city event. Whether it's Covington Days or any other event that we might have going on. Part of the promote is to also then moving forward in, you know, the three to five years is what are some other opportunities and how we can promote? And that would be in having such as a, a, a city meeting, basically a town hall, to where we can be talking about and promoting diversity. Promoting the work of the, not just the commission, but the diversity of the community. And that's where, again, we could have some of those guest speakers that could be engaging. We could have panel discussions, things like that. So that's kind of down the road. It's a very ambitious goal. And so we know that if that portion is very time consuming, so we know that that's definitely going to be something that's going to have to get built up. It's not going to be immediate. Back to you, Monty, for the last one.
It's kind of like what we were just talking about with the serving part. So facilitators and how? If we're talking about, we would love for the community to be here or us to be liaisons, it's like, what are we using? And so for our one to two year plan, our first thing is to not create a subcommittee, but it's to really figure out how, whether we're going to hold open houses or, you know, whether it's a one-page survey or what have you. So it's really looking at the hows of hearing people, their voices, how can we hear them? And, and having listening sessions or what have you. So probably we'll commit or have a subcommittee at some point to figure out the hows of, of having them be involved. Then our bigger plan, so our bigger ambitious plan is to have an ongoing sort of listening, whether it's again, listening sessions or just sort of ongoing where folks can tell us what is the climate. So kind of like the ongoing climate survey, but depending on, you know, where we are or how, how we're doing this. But also developing resources. And so, you know, not just like collecting data, but what are we doing with the data? So if the data is telling us we have, I don't know, no services for people who, you know, English is their second language and that's maybe the disconnect, then what are we doing? And so that would also mean we collaborate with perhaps other commissions, the human services commissions or what have you. Really coming up with like collaborative effort of like how we're going to actually do this. Also having a system of reporting, I think a lot of times, again, you know, whether it's because people just don't report or perhaps they don't know how to report. So if there are things happening in the city that people are, you know, not okay with, or maybe they are okay with. How do I tell the mayor that, hey, you know what? This is what's happening in the city and I don't like it, right? And even if it's one voice that we want to capture, we want to capture that. So some sort of anonymous reporting system, you know, that relates with the issues of equity culture and social justice in general. Again, that's a long-term goal that we have. And then I would, or we would actually love to have resources, whether it's resource guide or what have you to helping people navigate if there are things that are not working or what have you, but just navigating the system. So, you know, we are here for, to facilitate that dialogue. So whatever the city has, how can then we relate that and facilitate that dialogue? So we're working together, but then at the end of the day, it is the citizens that are getting something out of it. So it just doesn't seem like you have an open session and maybe you heard the two things I said, but then what is being done? So we would also be talking about things of that nature as well. That's it.
So with that, so this is kind of the 10,000 foot elevation view. We then had that and with the tremendous help of Daphne, we were able to take that and drill it down into our work plan. Which is a quarter by quarter, basically goal. This is the, the goals of what we achieve each quarter. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ramel, who will be walking us through the work plan.
So as like David said, you know, strategic plan of grand scheme of things, I'm going to use a football analogy. The work plan is the actual playbook of this whole, whole thing. It's, if you've, if you've gone over it before, it's pretty, it's pretty dry, but it's pretty straightforward. One, one thing that we, we start, we started back in Q1 of this year was, we have that survey that's up on the, on the mission page. I have not checked on it, on it since the last, I don't think we checked it since the last, yeah, it's still active. I think we're just going to keep that going throughout the year. I'm pretty sure at some point, maybe next year, we'll change the, I'll change the questions around, but I think it's good to just collect that data for now. And like Monty said, we'll find, find a use for that data at some point. If we go again with the subcommittee joke. We're always, this one we're actually doing in progress. As like David said, we do, we want to establish a subcommittee to explore, explore other events with events and partnerships with other other cities, Kent, Maple Valley, Black Diamond, et cetera, et cetera. Bringing this down to, you know, if there's if there's like something that we can do for Maple Valley Days, I'm pretty sure Black Diamond has something similar as well. We wanted it. Want to have some sort of, some form of participation in that. We're trying to do, you know, we were trying to keep doing this throughout the year. I feel like that one's more of a long, a long-term plan, but I think this is, I know we briefly discussed it during our last meeting, but this goes off. Working with the community development and, and update the 2015, 2035 comprehensive plan for the city of Covington. I think that's pretty straightforward to do that. Monty and David touched on this already, but we want to be, we want to be able to bring groups together. So proposing a town hall, public forum. Listening session for people, people with issues within the community. That's something that's that's something that's, would be, would be welcome. And I'm pretty sure the city council would like to have that kind of pep talk and vibes, at least for one night. Oh, that's part of, that's part of that one. We are actually, I believe we started work on this, on this one already, but to ensure all groups and individual and representative and city communications, I think we start. I think that, was it Daphne where you gave this example calendar of?
Uh, Daphne did.
Daphne, yeah, okay. But there, you know, we want to make sure that certain holidays from all, all walks of life, religion, what, race, whatever are, you know, would be included in, in the city, city calendar. Because that's obviously one way to saying, hey, we recognize that it's, you know, we're that it's, it's Hanukkah, it's, it's Kwanzaa, it's National Donut Day, or just for sake of the argument. That does not seem, it seems, it seems, uh, no, no, not redundant. It doesn't seem like the
But you know, there's, there's donuts, there's donuts. There's a type of donut in every culture.
That is true.
So you can have a subcommittee to investigate.
You're, you might be on to something. I was like, yeah, we'll look forward to that promise. And then, in any case, the, and obviously, obviously we'll work with the city council to get, get a clear vision. I'm, I typically work in the, better to ask for forgiveness than for permission. I realize we can't exactly do that, do that in the, in city government. So this is where we just come and say, hey, is it okay? We do donut Fridays for, for the city of Covington. That's, that's where you tell us yes or no, or pick five donut places and we'll go from there. Monty touched this, touched on this already, but you know, we always want to get feedback on, you know, get, on recruitment, recruitments. Just because we're, we're a pretty diverse group. We always want to have more voices in the room, as chaotic as that can be, but that's what subcommittee, subcommittee is for. Updating the webpage periodically. That's, we, anytime we have like a, a major thing, like, I think we're proposing with the flyer for Covington Days. That would obviously be something that we, enough done there. And I, I touched on updating the survey earlier. And then get guest speakers. I, I think, I think I had touched on this like way we, way in the beginning of coming up with this strategic plan. Is having, having experts on diversity, equity and inclusion. Doesn't need to be like a whole public forum. It could just be someone just talk to the city council or some, or human services commission or even come, you know, you can come out to a school, out to a school events, just to, just to talk about, you know, to talk about that subject. Okay, that's cool. Oh, this is yeah, yeah, I'm, yeah, I think a lot of, the rest of these are just for, you know, towards the end of the year and so, and so on. But a lot of the ones that I, that I covered is pretty much what we want to cover for this year.
So yeah, like, like I'm always saying, this is kind of a playbook. We are going to get it into sequential order.
Try to.
Quarter by year. Yeah, I was just, I, I can't go Q1, 2023 to Q1, 2022. It's just, my brain didn't work that way. So we are going to get it into sequential order, but that's kind of the, the drill down. So it's kind of give you a play-by-play. But there are some, some things that while we have been in a sense, I mean, in their transparency, fumbling to get ourselves together. There are some things that we have. So, and you want to touch base on just, I mean, they're, they're, they're small, small things, but to us, they represent a very important thing when it comes to the whole thing about equity and diversity.
Yeah, so going off of those, we have been, so far we've accomplished this survey. Community, we want to see where we should start from. Get a start, like a starting point and idea. We've done the land acknowledgement. Our most recent Juneteenth social media campaign where we got to reach out to a local black owned business and see what Juneteenth meant to them. And our most, also most recent, the Declaration of Human Rights.
So those, Declaration of Human Rights and the land acknowledgement are where we start our, our meetings every month. We do the land acknowledgement and then we have the, and the Declaration of Human Rights is from the United Nations. From the United Nations. So we read those at the beginning of our meetings. So while they seem small, they were important to us as a means of showing respect to the diversity of our, of our community. So I would then, I just wanted to share really quick, as we mentioned, a handout for Covington Days. So this is our next big step. We designed a flyer that we're going to give, but we have a little contest going that we're asking people 16 and older to share with us. What they, how, is to help us design a shirt for our commission. And it is to, it says to please help the ECSJ commission design their official shirt by using creative arts to answer the following. What does equity, cultural and social justice mean to you or the community? And so we want to see how creative we can get. So we'll, we'll select a winner from that. But then we're also going to have an ongoing interaction with the community, something that will, that will just continue, just like with the survey. And that's where we're asking to hear their voice. So we're asking them to engage with us and we want them to showcase their voice when it comes to equity, cultural and social justice by submitting your choice of art to the commission. So it's to, whether it be through spoken word, as far as poetry, whether it be through art. What, however they want to express their voice and share their voice with us. And that's going to be something that's going to be ongoing and that's open to everyone. It won't be age restricted. We want it, just some way of engaging the, the community and serving clear from them. And that will all we get posted also on the website so that people will be able to see. They can go to the ECSJ website and they'll be able to see and maybe start to learn because they'll start seeing things from other cultures that they aren't aware of. And they'll start to learn as well. So, and we've done that by also having a QR, we've created a QR code. Daphne was great. And I asked her last night to make sure it was tested so that it works and it does. So that, we'll have this as a big poster as well when we're at the city's, city stand. And so people can just shoot the QR code or they can have this fly, we'll have some flyers and they can also just shoot the QR code and go right to the website. Where all of this will also be posted as well. So this is kind of our, our next exciting thing to be doing. And it will really be our first So this is kind of our, our next exciting thing, uh, to be doing, and it will really be our first. Um, true interactive engagement, live engagement with the community, um, this weekend.
Creative arts contest yet, and or, you know, the ongoing piece. But I mean, this is an opportunity for us later on, work with the art commission, the youth commission, the human services commission, I mean. This is where it's like, little bit, it's small now, but we're also learning. The other thing that David you said, and I just want to highlight, because I think I've highlighted this last year also, this commission has gone through a lot. A lot of changes, a lot of changes, and, you know, uh, I know I said that and you appreciated the forming, storming, norming. Stages and such, which is, I think this is, this is what happens when you have so many different voices. So many different opinions, so many different people working towards a goal that they didn't know. We created this, I mean, everybody in this room from the commission should be super proud, because we did this. However, to get there, we stumbled, we messed up so many times, but that's what I think is needed. To realize that that is what the community is, that's actually life, right? Like, not everybody agrees probably on the council. However, you work for the, you know, the mission, so I'm super excited just to kind of see and to present this, and even though we're saying it's little. It, it took a lot of work to get us where we're at.
That's all that we really have, we'd love to open up now, get some feedback from all of you on the council. And, uh, any questions that any of you want to throw at us?
First, I, I want to say that I think the running tally for the word subcommittee was about three thousand four hundred and fifteen tonight. My question is, how many subcommittees are you forming? And I, I just am reminded of, of a joke from Futurama, if anyone remembers the show. Where they were in the central bureaucracy, and they were saying, we formed a committee to form a committee to determine the color of the book with all the rules. How many subcommittees are we, are we going with, and have you decided on the color of the book for the rules?
For, at least with the subcommittees, they come and go so fast that we don't keep track of how many subcommittees we actually have. Um, for example, for the, uh, the plan here, the strategic plan, it was David, myself, and Brown when. It took us a month, and then that subcommittee dissolved, because we're done, and then we will come up with a new one for the Covington Day flyer stuff. So it, it comes and goes, but. Yeah, that's, that's how we've been doing it.
Wondering to making sure that there's no redundancies.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we do pick committees, or we don't pick, we allow people and what their strengths are. So if your strength is you rather plan or design or something like that, then go for it, which is amazing, because then you can work with people's strengths. And what they want to do instead of all and tell people what they have to do.
This question I have, and I, I do have a couple, but, uh, a couple were just answered by, for that. Why exactly only want to participate in only one event a year? It, it, it looked like you, that's what it was saying, she doesn't want to do one event a year, we have at least multiple, why, why not say at least five? Of the events a year?
That would be, that would be an effective, absolutely, um, we are, we're being realistic in the fact that. While we are to meet once a month. Technically, because of the, um, the Thursdays that we meet. We actually don't have by calendar meetings on, in November and December. Because they fall on Thanksgiving in November, and right there, the Christmas, December. So like last year, uh, we ended up having an emergency meeting, um, earlier in December, we didn't have one in November, we had one earlier in December. Um, so we, we have actually only 10 months, and so we need to be realistic as far as the commitment and the amount of time. Um, and that we don't want to stumble. So yes, we want to add, and that's where like Ramel was talking about the calendar. Where we want to build that calendar, it's kind of like an events calendar, but it will be an events calendar that will. Identify and to celebrate all of the various types of opportunities, uh, of the holidays within the city. But then also, those can also be the opportunities that we would find to engage also with, with the community. So yes, we are very, point very well taken, uh, we just wanted to be realistic for the first couple of years, and then build on that.
Okay, so this is kind of the, the last one I have, and then I'm sure more will come to me later, and we can talk about that later. Um, so i- in reality, this is the second year of, of the commission, you guys have been around two years, I know some of you have been around for the full two years. Some of you last, some of you, what, what, two weeks now? And we, and you have a goal, you know, your goal is one to, two-year plan here. Um, what other partnerships have you created with the other commissions? Have, have you created any? I know that Parks and has been trying to get with everybody, or ARX has been trying to get with everybody on figuring things out. But what partnerships have you created with the other commissions in this two-year time that is in your celebrate, uh, goal here?
I'll defer to Moni, Ramel, I, since I'm just coming up on my one year, um, I think September is my one year. Um, or August, either the other, so I'm, I'm going to defer, because I know that there was some outreach happening before I.
Talked to the arts commission, actually, and that's where, you know, that idea, and that's what we were talking about, that this may grow into a bigger event. Where we may be trying to do the diversity-focused work, but use the art commission, so that's one. Where we have collaborated or exchanged ideas, um, we have also talked about the youth commission, because truck is actually part of the youth commission. As well, so we already have a member that's there as well. Our main thing, I guess the hesitation was at that point, or why we haven't collaborated as much as the paper says, is because we didn't have that. And now we have a blueprint, and now we know what we're talking about, so whether you want to call it, we weren't confident as to what we're collaborating on. And none of us wanted to waste any time, but now it's like you have a vision, you have a plan, it's, let's go for it. But within the last year and a half that we've been active, we have communicated and exchanged ideas with at least two.
It's on the. Yeah. Yes.
Right, okay, so how did you elicit the, the response for that? How did you get the word out to respond to the, the survey?
So it went on, it was also like Reagan was just saying, it was pushed through the social media as well, by the city. Uh, and we started to get some responses back, um, so we gather the responses and we go through them and, and share them, so Moni, Bronwyn and I. Um, gather those and we share them out to the, the rest of the mission. Um, hasn't been a lot of activity, that's where we're really hoping to push again at Covington Days. Because there's so, and, and, and it's great, we see on social, I just saw it again today. Push again about, or maybe yesterday, about, um, joining a commission within the city, so the, I mean, I. I give kudos to the city for really being in, um, active in pushing people to, in the community to join and to explore, um, commissions. So, because this is something that not a lot of people know about, I mean, when I'm out and about in the community, and I introduce myself, and I tell them about. I was just, I mean, my company was just down at, at, in Cornucopia, uh, this past weekend, I'll, my company will be here at Covington Days as well. Um, but when I was down there and, and introducing myself, uh, to other vendors that were around, as I, as I do. Um, I told them, you know, I said, hey, you're going to be out at Covington Days, and I told them, you know, what I do, and I'm a member of the commission. And they're like, oh, wow, you guys have that, that kind of a commission, that's cool. So it's, it's really, there's a lot of education still that has to be done, so.
I do, yeah. Um, yes, it's funny, because when, uh, you all mentioned one event, my first reaction was smart. Very smart, so opposite of Joe, clearly, um, but having served on a commission that has lots of eager goals. And lots of great ideas, it's really, really a lot of work to focus in and hone on those ideas and prioritize. And I think one event is super smart, I really do, I think you should stick with that. You can always add, but, um, you don't want to, to, to set yourselves up for, for failure. Um, I did have a question, again, you know, based on experience, having served on a commission with lots of ambitious goals and honestly. Arts, lots of creative energy and people going different directions, um. I saw a struggle with staying on task, and so it took us years to get to this point, so kudos for the work plan. But how do you expect to manage once these ta, because I see some of them are ongoing, and that's awesome. But how do you keep the inertia going to actually close the project or actually to make progress? Are people going to expect it and being, you know, knowing that they're accountable to report every meeting, or do they have a, a target date? I, I'm just curious, so we don't, you know, end up seeing the sa, the same thing in every, um, joint meeting.
I thrive on deadlines, I think we all do, so we already, with our subcommittees, again, is we form them as we go. And we have a deadline for a project that subcommittee is either working on, whether it's a deadline of, you know, you're going to come up with an idea. Or a final plan, but it has been working wonders for us just to have that and already put it on our agenda for next month, so it's coming. And then however much, you know, they can meet as much or as little or what have you, just depending on the project they're working on. But really, we already put ourselves up and have those deadlines, and so we're, we're, the subcommittee is being accountable to the whole commission. And they know that something has to be produced, depending on again what the project is, that's been working. And, you know, like I said, the inertia and how do we motivate people, it's by using everybody's strength, everybody's so different in our commission. And whatever you would like to work on, so then we are including people's, you know, talents, their skills, or what have you. And putting people on projects that they want to do, instead of just saying, and you, maybe you should do this. And that's been working, because people have been motivated to, you know, serve on these subcommittees.
Yeah, it's awesome, I'm excited, I love, um, to see this, this format and, uh, organization, because, um, I know it is. It's very difficult to get a group of passionate people, um, to actually get stuff done and not just talk about it all the time. Because I, we spent a long time doing that on, uh, some previous stuff I've been on, so yeah, awesome, love to hear it, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I've got about fifteen or so.
Thank you for letting me go before Sean, I appreciate it.
So what I'll do, I'll put, yeah, I'm going to put, uh, some of this in an email, but this, this is, I'm really excited about this. You know, there are some great opportunities, and I, I, I see the. Ability to create dialogue, which then can create common ground, I think this is really, really exciting. So just some things that I think there's some easy things we can do, um, and I will work with Reagan on this. Um, ecology, who I work for, you know, everything that we put out now goes out in multiple languages, so I think we need to do. Take a look at our website and see where we can, um, and which languages are predominant in Covington. Um, I would assume Spanish, but after that, I don't know what the next one is, so. Uh, multiple languages, uh, resources on our website that, um, address people that have, um. English as their second language, language length, those sorts of things to help them navigate those systems. I think working with our schools and identifying which languages, and there's also, um, I just took a training, uh, government-to-government training. With, um, our 29 federally recognized tribes, and I think there's an office of tribal governments in Washington State. So there's an opportunity there to start reaching out to our tribes, and I'd love to see us develop. At the start, just a connection with our tribal governments here, so I've got a, a name for someone who might be willing to speak. And maybe be our first speaker, so. Sister cities, I was thinking about that too, if there's a predominant community that we might be interested in. Recognizing and developing relationships with those, those communities as well. Uh, and then one more, I'll just do that. Um, you talked about resource guides to navigate our system, um, I think we should shoot videos, and we can do it in multiple languages. Um, just basically talking about what Covington is, what the website is, what services we do have, uh, and then those materials to multiple languages. So anyway, I'll, I'll type up the rest of this.
Thank you, Sean, that would be wonderful, to have that list, really cool.
I'll be quick, first off, um, I'm actually really proud of how much work everyone done, anybody built anything, you know that. Digging and laying the foundation, it takes a lot of time, super time consuming, but for good reason. Um, and not biting off more than you can, you know, you can chew, uh, once that first event goes incredibly successfully. We can learn from that, what was successful, what was not successful, and, um, I actually think that once we get the public. We're, we're like at the precipice of chug, 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 right? Um, clarity will come, it has to, we just haven't heard from our community too much, we haven't, you know. I don't think we've had the opportunity to be out there, um, so I really, I really foresee a big. A big wave of feedback that will then provide clarity. Um, and Sean touched on it just very briefly, but our school district actually has a lot of stats. Um, huge, when we had the school board meeting, they told us which the, what, languages were predominant, in fact, they were even surprised, and I was surprised to learn. Um, one of them was Spanish, Russian was one of them, but then there was another one that was. All, all of them, even. Anyway, they're a really fantastic resource, and I'm excited to see, um, even just by the end of fall, where we end up.
Oh, and not that the commi, well, the commission is new, and then we had COVID, I mean, we were developed or started during COVID, so I mean, that just adds to. But again, it's how do we still continue to do the work that we want to do with all of the things that are, you know, because of the pandemic. So it's an ongoing sort of process of how do we overcome barriers, and how do we continue to overcome such barriers?
What's a positive that came out of COVID is that people are hungry for.
Absolutely.
For interaction, for eye-to-eye communication, and I hope that serves to be positive.
And because I brought it up, I did check National Donut Day was last month. It was June 2nd.
It was when?
June 2nd.
Fabulous job. It started out with, we didn't know what, right? The emphasis, a lot of it was what happened between the four of them, but it's much bigger than that. About that improvement, um, so you guys have done a fabulous job. At International Festival Day?
Absolutely.
I don't know.
Yeah.
If there's a way, or even.
The, one of the, um, one of the members, the people that, um, organizes it lives in my neighborhood. So my company has been, has been involved in that paperwork too, so, yeah, it'd be a great opportunity. Uh, but I did want to say that, you know, as, as we talked about before, with, uh, like Moni alluded to, we were kind of. Walking through the desert, in a sense, um, kind of a lot, kind of that lost tribe. And I want to give kudos to Reagan as well, as members that have come and talked to us from the ARX mission. Um, we have had that kind of interaction, and by really kind of driving us more towards being focused, was very helpful. Um, because we were, we were being very ambitious, and we did as, as, uh, and we were talking about, um. We, uh, we did spend a lot of time just talking and talking and talking at meetings and passing out things and not getting anywhere to the point where. We all got frustrated as well, so that's, those things really helped, that session with you was very helpful, that's what drove us. Towards the strategic plan, um, and out of that came the work plan and all that, so, um, give kudos to all, all that have. Joined us along the path as well, and have guidance, so with that.
Each of you, um, I know like you said, it's a struggle, but everything starts from a seedling and grows. And look at Amazon, and he started in a garage, now look at him, I, I know that. Looking at each of you and everybody else on your mission, you are going to just grow exponentially and. We're proud of what you do and what you've done, and, uh, thank you, thank you very much for everything that you do. Thank you for coming tonight, this work plan and strategic plan is awesome, I mean, in two years' time. I mean, in two years' time, uh, like Jennifer was saying, that's admirable. Good job.
Thank you.
So thank you all very much. All right. You all have a great evening. Um, you can stop the recording. Thank you very much for coming.